Going to start right in and ask Beverly Perkins. Beverly, what are you most proud of as a Commissioner for District Four? And what do you want to accomplish in a new term that you haven't accomplished yet?
What I'm most proud of right now is the massive makeover for Mitchell Moore Park. The city of Pompano Beach and the Orange Bowl renovated the park for $4 million with a new renovated football field. And I'm very pleased with Coleman Park, which was a playground that we've had a massive makeover there. The Community Liberty Park, we had 179 streetlights put in. And also for Carl Weaver Park, we have put in night lighting for $295,000. Also coming next year is our Apollo Park Ultimate Park for $4.5 million. And then we have our Annie Adley Gillis renovation for $1.4 million. We're also going to do a beautification cleanup on Northwest Sixth Avenue leading into Blanchelli High School. And we also, I'm pleased to say we're having single-family homes built in my district, which a lot of people have been requesting. We have 59 single-family homes that will be opening starting in January. And my baby, which is the Pompano Beach Senior Activity Center, which is a $4 million project for our seniors. And right behind the Blanchelli Museum, we purchased the house and we're going to tear that house down to build a Blanchelli Museum parking lot. And also the new fire station in my district is $5.7 million. That building was 37 years old, so we were happy to have that. And coming up for my, after this election, I plan to launch my new Mitchell Moore Youth Center, Youth Development Center. So what I want to do there is try to put things in place for our youth so they'll have somewhere to go after school. And when there is no school, you want everything in that facility to help develop our youth. So with the Senior Activity Center to cover our seniors and our youth center coming up in the future, yeah, are my plans.
What made the difference in finally getting developers or investors to build single-family homes in your part of Pompano?
Well, I did a lot of calling around to different developers. A lot of them were not equipped to do single-family homes. And finally, I came upon D.R. Horton, who's known nationwide for building single-family homes. So I'm very happy that they're going to put the 59 homes there. And all the homes will be four and five bedrooms only. And the starting cost is $350,000, which is very good for the surrounding areas. So we're going to try to vet some of the people in the community so that we can get them to buy some of those homes.
Describe exactly where in the district those homes are being built.
It's being built on, I think it's Northwest Eighteenth. It's in front of the House of God Church next to Hunter's Manor Park. It's, I think it's a little more than seven or eight acres there.
Okay. So let me turn to Mary Schofield Phillips, the challenger. Mary, thank you again for joining us this afternoon. That list that Beverly Perkins just read off was fairly lengthy. It sounds to me like she's been, or she and her colleagues on the city, in the city commission, are diverting more city resources, more money to District Four, to the city's west side. Do you agree?
Well, they've been doing a, they've been doing a good job of getting some things done. A lot of people put their stamp on activities that are happening in the community. They really did not spearhead, and I find that most commissioners do that. Even events in the city, they put their name to it when they haven't really done anything with it. But I'm happy to see that we do have some things coming through. The Horton Homes, I'm happy to see that we have some single-family homes coming in. Horton Homes said though, there's going to be luxury housing. I don't know how true it is that there are actually going to be $350,000. Because what has been going on in my community is they come to us selling us a bill of goods. They say that it's going to be affordable, and then once it goes up, it's no longer affordable. When you look at affordable, you need to look at the income base of the people that are surrounded in that community. Can they really afford what's going up in that community? So yes, we need to have some housing for people who are outside and have higher incomes. But we need to be prepared also for those people that are in our community that are struggling to find housing, struggling to find somewhere to rent. We need to have some opportunities for them as well.
Okay.
Let me also mention that, let me add that we have also with the Housing Authority, they're going to build 31 single-family homes in the Blanchelli Estates as well. And across from that will be townhouses as well. That's on Northwest Sixth Avenue between Sanders Park and Liberty Park Community.
Beverly, I think Mary Phillips may have made a valid point. Wouldn't it be better, this isn't just true of the west side of Pompano, it's true of probably most parts of the city. Wouldn't it be better to sort of, to build two- and three-bedroom houses at a lot less cost that are, that's attainable and reachable for working people?
Yes, those homes will be built in the Blanchelli Estates I just mentioned to you from the Pompano Beach Housing Authority. They will be pretty much low-income housing. And if you look around in Miramar and those areas, those four and five bedrooms are starting out at $890. So I think the $350,000 starting out really fits the surrounding areas so that we don't change the face of the community.
Okay. Let me go back to Mary Schofield Phillips and ask you, Mary, a more broad-based question. Give me a general assessment, a report card, if you will. What kind of a job has Beverly Perkins done while she's been in office?
I think she's been having a very difficult time dealing with those commissioners who are sitting on the dais. She had been trying to get some things done, but she has been having a very difficult time because you know, you have to get the buy-in from those people for some of the things that you want in your community. And she's been having a very difficult time doing that. I think it's important that also that too, that they understand what our community needs are. Even though there's districting, we're still the commissioner for the entire Pompano Beach, not just for a district. And we need to be looking out for everybody's best interest so that the people in the city of Pompano Beach can all live together and have something that's affordable for them and just be able to enjoy what we have. Now, in terms of the Housing Authority, Housing Authority does not build homes for people to purchase. They build homes for people to rent. They're not in the home purchase building, they're in the business of rentals. And that's what they do. It's a federal government agency, and that's basically what they're doing. So if they're going to put something there, it's going to be rentals. It's not going to be anything for anybody to purchase and have on any regular basis.
Okay, but very briefly, isn't rental housing also pretty important?
Just as I said, it is very important. We have to identify, as I said in my interview, areas that we can put affordable housing, especially workforce housing. We have young people in our community that are working two and three jobs to try to keep up with the rent that's located in our communities. There is land available to do workforce housing for those young people that were uply mobile, that would be affordable for them. And I know of some areas in my community that that can be done. And that's something that I'm going to look forward to doing because I want to keep my child here. My child wants to remain in Pompano Beach where she grew up. And I want to find ways to keep her here. Because the housing prices, they've just gone blown way out of proportion. A lot of these people are living at home with their parents because they cannot afford to move.
Right. What you say, as you said a minute ago, you said that Commissioner Perkins has been having a very difficult time with the other commissioners. Give us a specific example.
I'll give you an example. As I said in my interview with you about business development, there has been very little business development in my community at all. And as you know, business development creates jobs. Business development creates opportunities. There was a project on Fifteenth Place where the community came up and they spoke vividly about putting townhouses on Dixie Highway in Fifteenth Place. And it was rejected. She tried to move it, they said it would not be a good place to put it. It would have been better for businesses. And I agree with her 100%. But the other commissioners on the dais did not agree. And they went ahead and they moved forward with putting townhouses on Dixie Highway in Fifteenth Place when that property was prime for business development.
What is your opinion, Ms. Schofield Phillips, about the major changes that the city commission has made to the Atlantic Boulevard Dixie Highway area?
Okay, I spoke on that. I think it's a good idea to beautify our community and make it a destination, which is one of the things that they are trying to do. I did speak about the fact that sometimes when the traffic is really bad, they block the intersections. And I think it's important that those intersections remain clear. But I think it's a good idea. I think that they should also open up an artery off of Atlantic Boulevard to divert some of that traffic. Because on the other side, and that's on the southwest side of Atlantic Boulevard, is divided by, I believe it's a canal of sorts. It would be good if they would allow that traffic to flow also in that direction as well to avoid any kind of bottleneck with that train that comes through the railroads.
I'll give Commissioner Perkins ample time to comment on this as well. But, and it's kind of old news, but it's certainly got a lot of attention at the time. And I'm sure no one is surprised we'd bring it up. But I wanted to ask you, Mary Phillips, about the incident in which Beverly Perkins had a verbal exchange with a Fort Lauderdale police officer. She was not ticketed or charged in any way. There was, the video of the incident was made public months after it actually happened. And it led to quite a big ruckus at City Hall, I watched the meeting. Mary, what is your opinion about that?
Well, I believe that when you are in public office, you should be held to a higher standard than other people. And then you should be respectful to authority. I'm always respectful to authority. And I didn't think that that comment was even necessary. I don't know what, why, what possessed Beverly to do what she did. But I just think it was inappropriate. And I think that we should respect the police officers. He was just doing his job.
Okay. Beverly, what are your thoughts?
Well, regarding the traffic stop?
Yes.
Yeah, the traffic stop was, it was for alleged speeding. It was not a criminal matter. I complied with the instructions from the officer. And ultimately, there was no ticket issued, and I received a verbal warning. So the officer, the conversation I had with the officer, if it was perceived as disrespectful, then of course I apologize.
Right. Do you think this is sort of, is this now, Commissioner Perkins, is this incident now in the past? Is it forgotten?
Yes, for me it is. I'm not sure for everyone else, but yes, for me it is, yes.
What's your opinion about, I'm interested in this effort. I think it was unsuccessful, it was unsuccessful. But I read in my newspaper that Mayor Rex Harden tried to get something going where you would not be the vice mayor anymore. And he couldn't get the votes.
Right.
That makes, that would make me or any reasonable person wonder if that, if this is going to affect your ability to get along with them after the election if you're reelected. So what about that?
Well, the situation with the vice mayor is a title that I'm not hung up on as being a vice mayor or a commissioner. What I'm doing, I've been doing for 39 years. I started in politics in 1983. So a title doesn't really give me the honors of what I've been doing in the community for the past 39 years.
Ms. Schofield Phillips, you and Ms. Perkins, Commissioner Perkins, live in the same community, know a lot of the same people. I watched the high level of emotion at the city commission when this came up. And the, I think it was sometime in July, if I'm not mistaken, June or July of this year. I, my impression watching was I saw a number of constituents come very forcefully to Ms. Perkins's defense and defend her enthusiastically. My question to you from a political standpoint is, even though nobody wants to have an ugly incident with a police officer, but is it possible that the way this played out has actually helped Commissioner Perkins?
I don't believe it's helped her. I think it's given her some bad publicity, the way that everything happened. I thought that trying to remove her from that title that they gave her, I think it was a little bit over the top personally. You know, I just, I just think that they should have just let it, you know, let dead dogs die. But you know, that's the way it works sometimes, you know. And I guess they felt strongly enough that they felt that that title, she was unworthy of having that title. So yeah, I just thought it was a little bit over the top personally for myself. But because you know, there's a new election coming out. And if people don't want her in office, they'll just vote her out.
Right, okay. Let me step aside and open the floor to my colleague Dan Sweeney. Go ahead, Dan.
Sure, yeah, I had a couple of questions. So first off, looking at all your questionnaires, there's one thing that you guys disagreed on that I wanted to ask you about. And one thing that you guys seem to share a similar opinion. First off, on the thing you disagree on, we asked specifically about whether you would support or oppose declaring a state of emergency for housing affordability in your city with a cap on rent increases of 10% a year and why. Commissioner Perkins, you said that you would support that and that some 60% of your calls have been on this topic since the pandemic.
The biggest issue in my district right now is survival. And since the pandemic, I have been receiving calls after calls after calls for people asking for housing. They were either put out of their apartments because they could not afford the rent or they have moved or lost their homes because they couldn't make their mortgage payments.
Well, Ms. Perkins, I do want to point out what your opponent said because she disagreed with you. And she said, I want to kind of respond to what she had to say. She said that we don't know what the property owner's expenses are, and we should not determine what the owner should charge to rent their property. And she supported giving an extended notice, maybe up to 120 or 180 days, to let people know that a rent increase is coming. But that the city itself should not be putting a cap on how much rent can go out because of the property rights of the owner. What do you say to that?
Well, I just think that it's a big emergency right now for people to find a place to live and lay their heads. Because people are looking for a place to live. And we need to try to see if we can help these people in any kind of way with the funds that we have available to help them. Now, I've been referring quite a few people to Broward County so that Broward County can help them with paying some of their mortgages and their rent payments. So it's very, it's the largest request I'm getting right now in the community is housing. So people are really trying to survive at this point, since the pandemic.
I understand. Ms. Schofield Phillips, you said a cap on rent, not a cap on rent, like true rent control, but a cap on rent increases would not be something that you would support and that you'd like to see kind of a longer notice about rent increases. What about Ms. Perkins's point? That we are in a severe housing emergency and that, you know, something very serious needs to be done about this?
Okay, we do have a housing crisis, that is true. I think that, I think that the government could provide additional subsidies for those people who are not have enough income to be able to afford the properties that they're in. I don't think it should be for the long term because right now, the market is trying to correct itself. And if you put those stipulations on people, usually when you put caps on people like that, it never goes away. And they're stuck with that. And me personally, I'm a property owner. And I don't like anybody telling me what I can rent my property for. So we need to find other ways. And then other things, they can move in with a family member or a relative. They can, as I said in my response to that, they can move in with a family member or a relative, get a roommate, there are other things that you can do to make it so that the property is affordable for you. You know, and not just try to depend on handouts. I think we need to try to think it through. The government should subsidize when they can, you know, because there is money out there for it. But as I said, just do it for a period of time. And it should be, should never, never be permanent, you know. Because like what the government does when they tax us, they don't ever want to take it back. And they continue to raise it and raise it. So that's basically the way I feel about that.
One thing, both of you seem to be on relatively the same page with, somewhat a little different, is neither of you seem to have a whole lot of love for the CRA. If you could explain to me, Ms. Perkins, you wrote that the CRA, the Community Redevelopment Agency, there's been a lot of history in its creation, its policies, and how those policies are carried out to impact your community. And Ms. Schofield Phillips, you said that, you know, you cited several paragraphs of issues that you have with the CRA and how the CRA has developed. I'd like to hear a little more about how you intend to turn that around and make, you know, the redevelopment agency work better for the people in your district. Ms. Perkins, you want to start?
Yes, the CRA in Pompano has a very extensive record. Our CRA has been around over 30 years. And we don't have a lot of results from that in 30 years. The northwest community, in my opinion, is about 80, 90 years behind time in a lot of things and a lot of areas. And just the little small little things I can do here and there will help the community. Now, we do have a new project that's coming up. The old name, I think, was the Innovation District. Now it's being called the Downtown District. And we plan to, the district is scheduled to build $100 million of development. That is what we consider the old Innovation District. And in that district is where I'm coming in. That's where Mary's husband helped to pass this when he was a commissioner. We were not at the table when this development came about. And my job right now is to see if we can get as many businesses in that area from this community so that we can keep the thrive going of the businesses here in Pompano. So that's a $100 million project that's about to start in District Four. And I'm trying to put all hands in with everything I got to make sure that this community is a part of every process of that.
Ms. Schofield Phillips, how about you? Would have been historically the problems with the CRA in relation to this district, and how do you turn that around?
Okay. Historically, the CRA has really not been, as I said in my comments, doing anything when it comes to business development, which is a problem even now. What I see coming in my district is a bunch of houses and apartments. But there has been nothing to address creating businesses or creating opportunities for businesses to develop and to grow within our community. MLK Boulevard had black-owned businesses that owned the places that they had to operate their business out of. That did a lot for our young people. And seeing somebody who is successful, it gives them the mindset that they can do it too, that they can become successful. We don't have that in our area. MLK Boulevard has very few black-owned businesses that own their facility. As I suggested, I think that we need to build a business condo that would allow African-Americans to once again own the buildings that they're in and operate out of. They do it in other areas, and we can do the same thing here. And the other thing is there are different pockets of land available. The city has a program where they're actually giving land away. But the people that are getting those properties are not the people from this community. They are not the businesses for this community. And the CRA has not reached out, as far as I know, to let people know that this is available. And that is a big problem for me. And that they have not done that. And it should have been done a long time ago. And it's important that we monitor what is being done. When they have somebody come into our neighborhood and say that they're going to provide affordable housing, is it truly affordable? And are they doing what they promised that they would do for us? Are they really giving jobs to the people in our community? Problem is, there's very little oversight. Nobody goes back to these people to determine if they've actually done what they promised. And I promise you, that is something that I will definitely do.
You mentioned the affordable housing. I want to go back to the $350,000 houses there, Ms. Perkins, that you said are being built.
Yes.
How do you, is there any way to ensure that those are going to local homeowners who actually need a $350,000 home? As opposed to say, a hedge fund that's going to buy half of those houses and rent them out?
Well, the community has been requesting basically upscale, single-family home neighborhood, especially for those students that are graduating from college. They come home and they're into their careers, they don't have a nice home to live in. So I think the $350,000 starting out is a very good price for, like I said, the surrounding areas and based on how the houses are built. What was your other question I couldn't remember?
Well, yeah, it's also a really good price for predatory investors. It sounds like a pretty reasonable price for a home in South Florida.
Yeah, but you know what I'm hearing from the younger people in the community? The younger people prefer to rent apartments. And the older generation, they want single-family homes. And that was not so, I guess, back in my day. We were all looking for a single-family home. That was just the thing for us. But this younger generation, they don't really want the upkeep of having a single-family home. So I think giving them the option, we have quite a few apartments that are coming up in my district. And to be honest, four sets, four new sets apartments coming up in my district. And just the two sets of single-family homes that are coming up. So I think it's giving the community an option. And what I plan to do in the month of December is have a meeting to inform the public about the 79 homes, what's required, what they need to do, and what to expect in that area.
Okay. Hey, real quick before I hand it back to Steve. You mentioned all those parks and their budgets, the park development in your opening. Is that all city money or is some of that from like state project funds or anything like that?
The, well, the projects that I mentioned to you at the very beginning?
Yes, with the parks and all that?
Yeah, most of that, most of those funds came from the Go Bond.
Okay.
And some of it came from grants.
Okay. Great, thank you. Steve?
Commissioner, thank you, thank you, Dan. Commissioner Perkins, what did the Pompano Beach City Commission do? What are you doing with the mileage rate, the property tax rate? Is it going up, going down, staying the same?
It has gone up slightly this time around. And I voted for it this time because of the pandemic and how the economy has, prices have risen. Last year's budget, I voted against it. But this year, I voted for it based on what staff was telling me about the price and how things are going up.
I want to ask you both a question. I'm going to start with you, Commissioner Perkins. This comes under the broad category of getting things done. When we decide to endorse a candidate in a race like this, this is a single-member district situation where only the mayor is elected county-wide in Pompano, right?
Yes, correct.
Each commissioner is elected from a specific district throughout the city. And your responsibility is mainly the west side. You have to get other people to vote with you to, you know, expend resources or to do something on behalf of your community. You can't do it alone, really.
Right.
So, and let's be honest here. I mean, there is a, and this is not true just of Pompano, but there has been many, many years of official neglect of communities in the western, west side of many of our communities. You could see it all up and down South Florida. But the question I'm asking is, how do you get the other people on the commission to see what you can see and to support what you're doing?
Excuse me. What I do every commissioner meeting, the day before every commissioner meeting, I send out over 250 texts to different people to let them know the time and date of the meeting. And they in turn send it out to other people. So my job is to inform them when there's a commissioner meeting. If they can't attend the meeting, please watch it on television so you'll be informed as to what's really going on in the community. When I'm on the dais and I'm speaking, basically, I'm speaking from things I'm hearing from the community. And it might not be something that the other commissioners can relate to. But I have to speak on behalf of the people in my district. That's what I'm there for, as their voice.
Okay. Mary Schofield Phillips, if you know, how effective is Commissioner Perkins's texting tree on the day before commission meetings in terms of getting the word out?
I have no idea, I've never received a text from her.
Okay.
Yeah, I only have a...
And I don't see a whole bunch of people coming to the commission meetings when there's issues that she is promoting. I don't see a whole block of people coming there for that.
And the reason being, the reason you do not see them, if you notice, at our six o'clock meetings, you see a lot of people at the meetings. But we live in a working community at one o'clock, so I try to get as many people that are retired there. And that's kind of difficult. But we just moved our meeting at one o'clock for the first time in the history of Pompano. And the residents are not showing up at one o'clock meetings. I voted against one o'clock meetings, but of course it passed. I think six o'clock meetings are best for everyone. I think six o'clock meetings are, are best for everyone. So that's why you're seeing a low turnout because it's a one, one o'clock meeting, but I still sent the texts out.
They do both. They do one o'clock and they do six o'clock. They flip and flop it.
Yes. Well, we only have one six o'clock meeting per month and that's the last, uh, Tuesday in the month. That's one six o'clock meeting. At that meeting, you do see quite a few people at that meeting, but very few at our one o'clock meeting.
Ms. Ms. Perkins, the meetings that are at one o'clock used to be at what time?
All of them were at six.
I see. Okay.
Yes.
When was this decision made?
Uh, I want to say a year and a half ago, maybe two.
And what was the, I, you made clear you didn't support it, but what was the motivation behind doing it?
Well, I think at the time we had, uh, Vice Mayor Barry Moss on the dais and he felt some of his senior constituents in the Palmare area would be more prone to coming to a one o'clock meeting, uh, versus a six o'clock meeting. And I think he encouraged the other commissioners and they passed it.
Okay.
But I don't, I do not see the people from Palmare in the city commission meeting, but that was one of the reasonings for it.
I think, I think, I think it's, uh, it's pretty much an irrefutable fact. I think that it's difficult to get people interested enough to go to a city commission meeting unless they really intensely care about something or their property values are being affected.
Right.
Something that affects them directly in the pocketbook, right?
Exactly.
Okay. Ms. Ms. Schofield, Ms. Schofield Phillips, tell me what you would do differently than Commissioner Perkins to engage people in the city, but my question was also about how do you get the other people on the city commission who live in other parts of town, uh, you know, to sympathize with your agenda?
Okay, let's talk about sympathizing with my, with, with, with their agenda. Uh, when you're on the dais, there's some issues that are important to them in their districts. And you have to be supporter of some of those things that they want in their district. And it goes hand in hand. And when there's something that you think is important in your district and they see the worth, worth in it, then they will support you as well. Um, and what was the other question that you had?
The other question was, was what you would do differently than Commissioner Perkins to get the word out, to engage your constituents to come to city hall?
Okay. What I would do differently is I would make sure that the communication is there. I would meet with them at least once every three months or once a quarter to discuss what's going on in the city. And most importantly, get their input. You know, a lot of times people come and they talk at you, but they don't really listen to what your concerns are. And I think it's important that we listen to what the community thinks about what's going on. And then we bring that back to the city, um, as well as inviting them to come out to, uh, voice their concerns about certain issues. Like even now there's a problem, a lot of the people are very disappointed that the city is not communicating with us what's going on. There are several projects going on within my neighborhood and nobody has a clue of what's going on. Are there apartments? Are there condos? Are there townhouses? Because nobody has communicated that information to them. And that is something that they're telling me that they want. They want to be more informed because, uh, it's, it's important for citizens to be more informed when they have to go and, and, and vote on certain issues. And so I think that that's one of the things I would do. The other thing is, you know, that we cannot talk directly to any of the commissioners that are on that dais.
Right.
But I could have some people that I know talk with them about certain issues that are important. So that then they will know that this is something that we really want in our community. And that's one other way that I would do it to try to make sure that I can get the support of the other commissioners.
Mary, is it important that, uh, that we have a sunshine law that prevents commissioners from talking to each other?
Uh, well, you know, I, my background is in government. My degree is in public administration and, um, I, I, I think, I think it's, it's so that there's not any kind of, um, improprieties going on when you have two commissioners meeting in private to discuss important issues that the community, um, is involved in. So I'm for the sunshine law and the most importantly, I think transparency is important in government. And sometimes that is, is why people are really having a big problem with Pompano Beach right now. Cause they feel that, um, they don't feel comfortable with, um, the Pompano Beach Commission because the communication is not there. And they feel, and I've seen it many times at the commission meetings, that their voices are not being heard. And I just want to assure that their voices will be heard and some of the things that they want will be done. And that's what I, I intend to do if I, when I am, um, Commissioner of District Four.
Let me go back to, uh, the part where, um, you were talking and asking about, uh, the other commissioners on the dais.
Right.
Um, I, I've always believed in collegiate, uh, voting. Um, rarely ever do I vote against a commissioner in their district. Now, if the city hall have about 150 people there against one issue, I'm going with the people. So I rarely ever vote against another commissioner's district, uh, while I'm on the dais.
Um, I understand the sentiment that we've, we've, we've had, we've done two other interviews, two other seats. And the question is from the other candidates, make it clear that there are candidates in this race, in other races in Pompano who feel there's a serious growing problem with overdevelopment. There's too much cut through traffic in residential streets. There are too many, there's too many townhouses being built. There's too many apartments sprouting up lots of places and at the same time, older, older neighborhoods seem to be showing some level of deterioration. So if you, if you defer to other commissioners, uh, and I understand the sentiment, like I said, you may be also though encouraging overdevelopment if the other commissioners want to keep approving projects. Do you see the concern?
Uh huh. Exactly. Exactly. And you know, I, I do believe that we are overdeveloping. And I've said to the city manager on several occasions that we need to put a huge roadmap in place for the city to say, this is what we want in our city. This is what we want it to look like as a whole before we allow all these developers to come in and we're overpopulated, overcrowded, and then there's nothing we can do about it at that point. I think we're just allowing them in without looking at the bigger picture down the road. And that's where the problem is going to come later. But right now it's, yes, it's, it's too much development going on at this point.
Who's responsible for that mainly?
Uh, the commissioners.
Right.
We make those decisions. We say yes or no. Yes, it's the commissioners. It's the leaders. Yes.
Why is it so hard to say no?
Well, it's not hard for me to say no because I listen to the residents. Um, it depends on the commissioners. I've never come to a commissioner meeting basically with a made up mind. So I'm always listening to what the people have to say, what the public has to say, an audience to be heard or whatever they're talking about on the issue. Um, I listen to the residents. So I'm not a, a big fan of developers, but I do listen to the residents.
Okay. Um, since you've been on the city commission, have you had an occasion to vote for? Did you have to give your vote to approve any part of this Atlantic Boulevard Dixie Highway realignment?
Yes. Yes.
Is that the right decision?
Well, um, the first time it came before us was in 2000, I want to say 17, about the Atlantic Dixie Project.
Right.
Um, I just remembered that, um, myself and oh, the former commissioner voted against it. Um, uh, Sobel. Yeah, he and I voted against it. Yes, we voted against it back in 2017. When it came up later, um, meeting with staff and everyone, uh, they assured me that this would not, um, delay traffic or anything. And of course it was just the opposite. And I felt that the community came out about it because the community didn't know anything about it. They didn't know what to expect. And there was just traffic jams everywhere. So if you're going to, um, reduce some of the lanes, um, I don't think it's going to work. Um, but I've been talking with the engineer in the city and they assured me that they could make this happen with the traffic flowing because I think Atlantic is our most busiest, um, highway or street in Pompano. So we definitely don't want traffic delayed in that area. And what they're doing is the bigger picture is for people to focus on the downtown area. And they're trying to move the traffic slower so people will go into the downtown area, which I do have a problem with that. Uh, people do not want to be held up in traffic by no means because people are basically trying to get to and from I-95. So I understand they want to slow the traffic, but there are a lot of different ways we can slow the traffic, uh, sometime without reducing the lanes. But staff and the engineer has, uh, assured me that that will not be the case.
Okay. Um, the clock is becoming a factor and we have another group of candidates at five o'clock, but I, what I would like to do is, uh, we don't do this all the time, but we do it on occasion. I want to give each of you a chance to make sort of a concluding uh, statement and, uh, pitch if you would, as you would if you were speaking to a group of homeowners or part of the business community, whoever. And give us your best case as to why you're the best candidate in this race. And we're going to, I'm going to let Mary Schofield Phillips have the last word. So Commissioner Perkins, you have the floor. Two minutes.
Okay. Well, um, I have a proven track record of being the voice of our community and I've gained momentum in producing policy and programming that has impacted the community in a positive way. Um, I've shown that I can work effectively with the residents as well as the business community. So with that, I want to continue to empower, uh, the residents and the businesses in District Four.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mary Schofield Phillips, please go ahead.
Um, I just want to say that, um, I've been involved with the community for many years. Um, I always look at what the needs of the communities are and I try to meet those needs. I have, um, I've done some events, uh, primarily the Health and Wellness Fest that I do every year. We saw a need to help the felons get their records cleared. So we brought that to Pompano Beach. Um, the Enterprise Zone, which is very, would be very important to Pompano Beach if they tried to use it because it, it actually helps when in terms of hiring local people, giving incentives to those companies that come and want to develop within our community. I think it's important that we are aware of the resources that are available, communicate that to the community so that they can take advantage of, of the resources. And most importantly, business development. I'm a business owner. I've been a social worker with the state of Florida. Um, I've been in education. I've worked with the, uh, school board of Broward County and even to the point where I was going to become a teacher and took all the classes to become a teacher. So I just think that I'm the best candidate because I'm well-rounded. I'm familiar with what's going on with the community. I actually reach out and speak with people. I am approachable. I am courageous. I'm not afraid to think what, say what I think and what I feel. And, uh, I'm going to do what I feel is in the best interest of the community.
Okay. Well said. Uh, thank you both for making time to be with us today. Thank you for doing the questionnaires. Want to see as many people as possible voting in Pompano Beach on November 8th or before November 8th. So.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Dave. Thank you, Ms. Phillips.
Yeah. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you both very much. Take care. Good luck.